It's good to see you here this morning. I guess you noticed that this is not your usual chairman sitting up here this morning. We want to remember in our prayer, our chairman who is dealing with some COVID issues. And I'll be taking care of this chair this morning. So if you'll stand with me for our prayer and our pledge allegiance, we'll begin. Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the day that you've given us. We're thankful for all the many blessings that we have. And may we always remember the blessings that we do enjoy and have here come from you. Father, we ask that you be with us as we go over the many things that are important, vital to this county, that you give us the ability to handle those things and lead us also in the right direction that we should be going. Father, we say a special prayer today for Jeff Phillips and his wife, who are both dealing with COVID. That you turn them back to health, look after them, be with those who are ministering to them, bring them back to us as soon as possible. Father, be with us today, keep us safe, watch over and protect us. We offer this prayer in your son's holy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gail, please call the roll.
Tim Everwater. Mike Kush. Dee Bogle. Charlotte P. Rhonda Allen. David Jones. Craig Lynch. Chip Pinion. Marvin Whitworth. The Phillips. Teta Street.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Have a quorum. We now come to item four, approval of our minutes. I've asked that Craig Lynch. We have a motion to approve and we have a second. All those in favor say aye. Oppose. Minutes have been approved. No items have been withdrawn or deferred. I believe that's correct. So we'll begin right into our new business. Item 6A, A1. Northside Estates Section 4, 221005. 145 lots on 102.52 acres, zoned RM located along Northside Drive. RHB LLC applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you and good morning, everyone. Hope everybody's doing well today. The first preliminary plan that we have on the agenda, as you stated, is Northside Estates. Northside Estates was approved several years ago and is currently under construction. A lot of the lots have already been developed, but they are still moving forward with some additional sections. As you can see, there is an existing access point onto Last Cassis Pike there toward the northwest. Mike's kind of highlighting that area right there. What they're proposing to do is they purchased, the developers purchased several adjacent tracks and they will be extending the subdivision. This is not a rezoning. This is an RM zone property, as you stated. So these lots are at least 15,000 square feet in size. As you can see on the west side of the property, there is a connection to the, what's called the Last Cassis Estates, I believe, subdivision. That was the Elmington property when we looked at that just a few months ago. So there will be a connection there that will eventually, there'll be two different connections from that subdivision back onto Last Cassis Pike. Both of those have turn lanes already, you know, as part of their approved plan development and preliminary plan. You can see, and the biggest issue that we have with this subdivision right now really has to do with timing between the development of this new section of Northside and the Elmington development to the west. Our concern has to do with the only one way in and one way out onto Last Cassis Pike as it's currently constructed. When we first started meeting with the applicant about this, we had some discussion about a southern access onto East Pitts Lane right there that Mike is showing on the map. Now, when you look at the preliminary plan, you'll see that there is a cul-de-sac right there. We had a lot of discussion about that, went back and forth about it and decided with the access points to the west that are going to go back to Last Cassis Pike, that we were okay with leaving that as cul-de-sac. However, after speaking amongst staff about this and also with the applicant's design engineer, what we want to avoid is development of Northside and then having all these additional lots on there. And then for some reason, the Elmington development doesn't ever move forward and those connections to Last Cassis Pike aren't made. Therefore, again, you're kind of in the same situation, one way in, one way out. So we had the design engineer for the applicant place a note on the plat, or the plan, excuse me, and Mike's gonna, looks like he's gonna zoom into it. Essentially, what we've asked them to do is add this note that in essence says, if you get to the point of developing these lots and that connection to the west still hasn't been made, then they need to make provision at the end of Bull Pine, name of that road that goes to East Pitts, to either create a temporary intersection right there until that connection is made, or some sort of emergency access, similar to what they've already done. You'll recall when we looked at Northside Estates originally, there was a kind of like a gravel path that was placed in there for emergency access and was gated in the event that that access on the Last Cassis Pike was blocked for some reason. So there is a gated access there already, but of course, that's going to be, you know, become part of the road extension in that area and part of the development. So we're okay with them moving forward as long as that note is on there and, you know, they have placed it on there, so we're more comfortable with that. But we're hopeful, since the preliminary plan for the Elmington development's already been approved, that these will kind of come online about the same time. So with that, most of our other comments have been addressed. I'll let Mike handle any other stormwater or traffic issues that he wants to talk about. But with that, Mike, go ahead.
Okay. We have received construction documents for the estates at Last Cassis, so we are reviewing those right now. And they expect to move ahead pretty soon as we can get approved plans. If you recall, this is a volume sensitive area, a lot of sinkholes in the area. There's a large one right here that's going to be on this step lot. So we're asking them to look at volume sensitive designs to make sure we're not impacting any of the surrounding properties or this new step lot if we can help that. I'll go back to the 2010 aerial imagery just to kind of give you an idea what happened back then. You can see water kind of sitting in this bowl area right here, and these are more sinkholes along the way. So they will need a geotechnical engineer onsite to verify that if they do modify, close, enhance, any sinkhole feature, that we will get a report for that and make sure it's done correctly. So if there's any questions, I'll try to help answer. But it's pretty straightforward. If you know Pitts Lane, it's more, I think my driveway is wider than a few places on East Pitts Lane. So we, you know, always looking for another connection, but this being so narrow, we didn't feel comfortable dumping a lot of traffic on East Pitts without getting it improved. So we're feeling good that they will have a secondary connection through the estates of Last Cassis up here, and it will have to go through their step lot, and I'll pan over to that.
Doug, you're talking about orchestrating two different things here so they do meet at the same time.
Right. And that's why we had them put that note on the plan about that southern access on Bull Pine, at least temporarily until that connection is made. Once that, we don't foresee that being a long-term issue, but...
If it doesn't work, you see it's not going to work, extending that, I believe it's Lot 219 where the cul-de-sac is, make it a straight street through there?
We could, we could, but you know, they'd have to make improvements at that intersection and then we'd have to evaluate East Pitts. Like I said, it's not very wide. It's a glorified driveway. So we would have to evaluate that.
Holding that lot right there open until you find out if it's going, I mean, when the railroad meets and don't touch, so...
Yes, sir. We wouldn't have it reserved back either as access for new fire access that could go north to these earlier sections, or keep it open as a potential right-of-way for through traffic.
I make motion approved. Subject to staff comments.
Have a motion made to approve. Have a second.
Mr. Chair, I have one question for staff, please, before we vote on that.
Mr. Everwater.
Thank you. Doug, on the setbacks, I see an asterisk on a corner lot.
Yes.
Alternate 15-foot side setback on corner lots. Is that something that we've seen before?
Yes, we have. Now, it's not something we talk about very often. We added that into the ordinance when we updated it back about 10 years ago. It's basically what it allows, you know, before we had that, corner lots would have two fronts and two sides. Now, what we allow in some situations, if they want to take advantage of it, rather than punish a corner lot for having two front yards, we say, okay, you can have a front, which is the way your house faces, you can have a front yard, that other corner would be considered an alternate side, gives them a little more room, buildable room on that lot. And then they have a rear setback just opposite where the front is. But yes, we have seen that in the past.
Further discussion? Not. Item 6A1, Northside Estates, Section 4. The motion is to approve. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. 6A2, East Fork Homes, 221009. 62 lots on 69.05 acres, zoned PUD, located along Central Valley Road. Middle Tennessee Developers LLC are the applicants. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. You'll recall this property, it was rezoned PUD back in, well, just a couple, not even two months ago, last month. This development contains two residential products. There are single-family attached products or townhomes, and there's also detached product. The plan you're going to be looking at today is for the single-family detached product. It also does show the lots where the attached product is, the townhomes, but the townhomes will be considered under a separate site plan submittal. Road connections are shown to the east, which will tie into the crossings at Walter Hill, which actually is the next item on the agenda. The planning commission's already approved a preliminary plan for Irwin Landing, which is to the south of the subject property. So we had kind of in short succession, we had three different developments, all planned developments in here. So the roads to the south, this development does line up with that and incorporate the road name as well. Street name coordination was going to be an issue between this development and the crossings at Walter Hill. I do believe we have that taken care of. When you see the next plan, you'll see that the two forks name designation continues on to the east through that property. Most of our comments have been addressed. There are a couple of minor things with some of the open space areas. They have separate site plans for the kiosk area as well as a pavilion for the site, for some of the open area on there included with this particular plan set. We're going to work with them on that. Really, it's just a matter of shifting it. It's a little too close to the front property line, just need to back it up a little bit, but little things like that. From our standpoint, it's in pretty good shape, but I'll let Mike handle any other stormwater issues and whatnot that he wants to. Also, and you may have talked about this, as you recall, there was a lot of traffic improvements discussed with this property and the property to the east. These two developers have gone into an agreement for some improvements to the intersection at Lebanon Pike and Central Valley Road, including turn lanes and a new signal at that intersection. So that's something we're excited about because those improvements really help, we feel the traffic in that area. So with that, Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, thank you, Doug. No, they've addressed most of our concerns, like Doug said, they're, let me go back to the plan. They will have a connection to the south, to the Irwin property development. They will have a connection at Central Valley Road. We've asked them to put in a left turn lane and they've agreed to do that. They'll have a dedicated left and right coming out of here. And this going east will take them to Lebanon Pike where that new traffic signal Doug mentioned. And then it will have a connection to the adjacent property, the crossings at Walter Hill. So we will have another connection here. We will see in the not-too-distant future, some site plans for these townhomes in these areas here. So these will be coming soon. They do have identified several locations for stormwater management areas and all around the property and step in various areas. So like I said, they've addressed our concerns and just some fine tuning on the mail kiosk site plan, I think is what Doug said. So any questions, I'll try to help answer.
Any questions? Mr. Kush?
Doug, you're okay with the infrastructure improvements as well as drainage as a whole?
I think so. I mean, we know that the infrastructure improvements as far as the turn lanes and the signal and everything, we know those are coming. Of course, they're going to have to submit detailed construction drawings for our office to review. That's kind of where the rubber hits the road, so to speak. So, you know, there may be additional issues as we go through that, but as far as the preliminary plan is concerned, it appears to be in good order.
Okay. And I think Mike or one of you said that there is a cost-share agreement between the next property?
Yes, sir. The next development to the east is called the crossings at Walter Hill.
We're going to talk about in a second?
Yes, it'll be next. And they have both agreed to share the improvements at Central Valley and Lebanon Pike. There are turn lanes already on Lebanon Pike. There's a three-lane section as you go north towards the bridge. So they're already in good shape there. And they also have a D cell right turn lane coming south. So what they'll be adding is dedicated right and left turn lanes coming out onto Lebanon Pike and then the new traffic signal.
All right. And is there also a third new development coming?
Well, it's the Irwin property. They got in there a little bit early before that came into play, so I don't believe they will be sharing in the cost with that. They are making, if you remember, the rock in the hard place.
Yeah.
Between the river and the cemetery. So they'll be doing a lot of turn lanes.
Yeah, they've got their own things that they're improving on. Okay.
But I would say that this development will also come north and meander through these two new developments to get to the traffic signal at Central Valley if they want to continue north on Lebanon Pike. That's what I would do if I were living in Irwin Landing.
Just out of curiosity, I don't know if anybody, well, let me just say it. Does the school board, are they in communication with this kind of a growth plan?
Yes. Whenever I see these, we send copies of the pattern books over to their central office. Now, they sometimes make comments, sometimes they don't. So, but yeah, whenever we see residential larger, especially development like this, we send them copies of this, plus I believe they're on our agenda mail out or emailed notifications as well.
All right. Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion and a second for the approval of East Fork Homes, 221009. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Oppose? It carries. Item 6A3, the crossings at Walter Hill, 221011. 35 lots on 36.84 acres, zoned PUD, located along Lebanon Pike, GC Central Valley, LLC applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This was the development we were just referring to during our last agenda item. This is the crossings at Walter Hill. This is also a mixed-use development as far as both the residential product and also does have a commercial element, a small commercial element along with it. This does have townhome units and this does have single-family. As with the last application that we just considered, this is only going to consider the single-family lots, although it will create the lots for the townhomes and again, site plans for the townhome units and eventually whenever we see the site plan, that will be, I'm sorry, for the commercial area, we'll see a site plan for those. So this is only primarily for the residential lots as we're looking at this. Again, most of our comments have been addressed. I won't go into any additional detail about the traffic improvements. You know, we talked about those improvements at the intersection of Lebanon Pike and Central Valley Road. The applicant is also going to install turn lanes into the development off of Central Valley Road. And there are comments that we still have that are outstanding on the mail kiosk property that they have identified there. Those are things we can handle administratively. We're allowed to actually, we don't have to bring those to the planning commission anymore, but we do allow them to include it as part of their preliminary plan set. But with that, I won't go into any more detail because like I said, the issue with the traffic and everything is pretty much the same as it was. You will see that, again, the road connection is made to both the west, which is to the East Fork development, and also to the south, which is, again, the Irwin property. So everything's lining up as it should. So this gives us a lot of interconnectivity in this area between these or among these three developments. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike for any additional comments he may have.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. So this one is, like Doug said, the two connections, one to the west to the East Fork Homes development, one to the south right here at Irwin Landing. And then they'll have another connection to Lebanon Highway, Lebanon Pike here, and then also, excuse me, one to Central Valley Road. So this is where the new intersection improvements will be, and we've asked them to show some of those improvements. You can kind of see how these will progress with this development. They, we're still studying this area. This is where the three-lane section kind of narrows down, so there might have to be some improvements to Lebanon Pike to get sufficient storage and bay taper in this area right here. But we think they're close, we just need to verify all that. They will have a stormwater management area here. This is their large step lot here in this area. Townhomes will flank either side of the street here, and then also these two streets will be private streets. They'll be designed to county standards, but they will be maintained by the owners association for this development. This one will be public, public, and then also public here. But they, all the pieces are starting to come together. You can kind of see the road networks like Doug was talking about, these little center, the black lines are the center lines of the new roads coming in. There is, and I forgot to mention on the previous one, there is a little force main that goes through this development that goes north and serves the Walter Hill Elementary School. We'll work with them on that. On this development at the crossings at Walter Hill, my computer will catch up, there is a force main. And the blue lines are water lines, CUD water lines. This purple is a force main that comes from the landfill. It collects the leachate from the landfill and then it goes down into the city sewer network to be treated. Other than that, like I said, we've got a few fine-tuning issues with the site, with the mail kiosk, but we think the preliminary is pretty good order.
Questions?
Just for a point of reference, talking about schools, the school board did buy 100, 150 acres, I think, of the Matthews Farm up here for a new middle and high school right here. So not far from that. This is the Walter Hill Elementary School, and then the middle and high school could be here, so...
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mike or Doug, the high school is in line to be started what year?
Yeah, that would be a question for the school board representatives. But it's in line. They've got it queued up and they have a, I guess, a progression that, you know, some move to the top faster than others based on the growth in the area and the demand for new schools.
Mr. Chairman, I think the schools is going to be in line to come aboard by the time a lot of these are finalized, so I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
With staff comments.
Have a second. Commissioner Whitworth, further discussion? Have a motion to approve the crossings at Walter Hill, number 221011. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? It carries with staff comments. Moving now to those that are submitted for final plat approval. 6B, item one. Strickland Ferguson Two-Lot Subdivision, 212003. Two lots on 1.88 acres, zoned RM located along Elam Road. Dale Strickland is the applicant, includes a waiver request to allow the establishment of non-billable lots. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. As you stated, this property is along Elam Road. The applicant would like to divide this property into two parcels. Our comments have been addressed and for the most part, this meets our regulations. The biggest issue at this point is that there's no septic soil on the property that can be identified. So the applicant's asking just to divide this into two lots. At this point, he doesn't have any development intentions. He said at some point that he might just wait for sewer to come a little closer to the property and maybe tie into that. He's also talked about the possibility of maybe looking at a possible rezoning application for this in order to maybe do self-storage or something to that effect. But at this point, that's pretty much what he's asking for. So with that, I believe the applicant is present in the back with that, but I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I make motion approve. Subject to staff comments.
A motion been made to approve and second for the Strickland Ferguson Two-Lot Subdivision with staff comments. Any further discussion? Not. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? It passes. Moving to 6B, item two. Prater and Bora Subdivision, 222051. Eight lots on 7.68 acres, zoned RM located off Compton Road. Chad Christensen is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the planning commission back in May last year. Lot one was previously recorded as the Prater subdivision, and with the recording of this subdivision plat, it'll be incorporated into the Bora development. There is a drainage path that does run through the property. They do show a 20-foot drainage easement on the back of those lots that front along Esalen Court. You can kind of see Mike's kind of highlighting, there was existing path that was already identified running through Lot one, which again was part of the Prater subdivision. When we first looked at this a few years back, that was a concern that we had. They're also showing a detention pond on Lot seven to help detain some of that water before it moves through the forward downstream to the rest of the drainage network. Our comments have been addressed. This plat does seem to be in good order, so we'd recommend approval, but I'll let Mike make any other comments on the drainage out there.
You've pretty much covered it. They do have a stormwater detention area up front, and this will be on a public road. The reason it says 54 feet, that was to get the road centered inside the easement, which left a little reservation strip, I believe, for a phone line or something that's already installed. So they just made the right-of-way a little bit wider right there. But it is under construction. They do have their T-dot entrance permit for Compton Road, and it is progressing.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve. Subject to staff comments.
Motion made to approve with staff comments. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Kush. All those in favor of approval of Prater and Bora subdivision, 222051, say aye. Oppose? It is approved. 6B, item three, the estate at Last Cassis Pike, 222053. Four lots on 14.81 acres, zoned RM, located along Last Cassis Pike. Simmons Builders applicant, includes a waiver to allow the establishment of an off-site soil easement. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, the applicant's proposing to split this into four lots. Lot four is not going to be a standalone tract. It's actually going to be combined with a county property, county-owned property to the east. Lot one will contain a tight line and septic soil easement in favor of Lot two, which is why they're asking for the waiver. You can see it's shown on the plat right there. Of course, that's the, the big reason, well, one of them, is why this is coming before you, is just because of the, the off-site easement. We can't approve waivers administratively. With that, the comments that we had have been addressed. The plat appears to be in good order, so we'd recommend approval, subject to the staff comments and the approval of the waiver. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just, just to follow up, Lot four, if y'all recall, is being purchased by the county. You'll see later on in site plans, this is where we're proposing to do the Last Cassis Public Health and Safety Building right here. So, this driveway back to the ball fields is going away, so we will be building another driveway back here on this Lot four to get to the ball fields. So, it doesn't, there's not interference with emergency vehicles coming in and out.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question with Mike. Mike, this is the site that we had a post office proposed on one time, right?
Yes, at one time, yes, sir.
And that's fell through?
Yes, sir. Long, long time ago. I remember they went through the rezoning process, and it didn't go so well. We'll just say.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve with staff comments and the easement for off-soil site approval also.
Okay, we have the motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have the second. Motion is the estate of Last Cassis Pike, 222053. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Say no. It's approved with staff comments and the improvement of the off-site soil easement. Item 6B, item four, Baker Road subdivision, 222054. Five lots on 10 acres, zoned RM, located along Baker Road. Dara and Doyle Bradford are the applicants. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant's proposing to split this property into five lots. There is a fire hydrant in the area, almost directly across the street from this property, so all the lots are going to be within 1,000 feet of the hydrant. Most of our, well, actually, pretty much all of our comments have been addressed. There's a couple little tweaks they do need to make to the plat, the size of the water line being one of them. But, I mean, little things like that that we'll make sure are addressed before this gets submitted for recording. But with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions, as we feel this plat's in good order.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second. All those in favor of Baker Road subdivision, 222054, with staff comments, say aye. Oppose? It's approved. Item 6B, number five, the estates at North Milton Road, 222055. Four lots on 10.98 acres, zoned RL, located along Milton Road. Michaels Homes applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Thank you, sir. As you stated, the applicant's proposing to split this into four different lots. All the lots are larger than two acres, most of them closer to three acres in size. All the lots will be within 1,000 feet of an existing hydrant. We did send our comments over to the surveyor for the project. Those comments have been addressed. This plat appears to be in good order, so we'd recommend approval.
A motion to approve and second for the estates at North Milton Road, 222055, with comments. All those in favor say aye. Oppose? It's approved. Moving now into item C, submitted for site plan approval. Number one is Eps Mill Road Gas Station, reapproval, 203040. Construction of 4,650 gas, gas station on 1.84 acres, zone EAC, located along Eps Mill Road. Keppal Patel is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. This site plan was originally approved by the planning commission back in September of 2020. Of course, as you know, site plans and middles are valid for 18 months. No construction's ever progressed on this site, no permits have ever been taken out, so the site plan essentially has expired. So, they're just going back for reapproval. We've looked this over. We had to make a few tweaks to the plan, but beyond that, this plan's in good order. It really hasn't changed from when we looked at it back in September of 2020, so we'd recommend approval.
Motion's been made to approve and second. Is that with comments?
I would assume.
All those in favor of the Eps Mill Road Gas Station reapproval, 203040, say aye. All opposed? It has been approved. 6C, number two, Rutherford County Public Health and Safety Building, Walter Hill, 223014. Construction of a 10,731-square-foot public safety facility slash fire station on 14.58 acres, zoned IN, located along Lebanon Pike, Highway 231. Rutherford County Government is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. We've seen some of these in the past. We've seen a, one of the Public Health and Safety Buildings for both Rockvale and also Kitchell have already been approved and are both under construction. We have plans, the county has plans to construct several of these throughout the unincorporated area. We've got this one here that we're considering today, as well as the one in Last Cassis we'll consider next on the agenda. These centers will all include fire protection, ambulances, and shelters for severe storms. This building is located on the same property where the Walter Hill Elementary School is located. It will be tying into the sewer that Mike was referring to earlier that runs through those properties to the south that we considered for a preliminary plan approval. So, because of that, that will have to go before the city planning commission. It will have to meet the city standards, and Mike's kind of highlighting where that line is right there. Most of our comments have been addressed. I'll let Mike handle any of the stormwater and traffic issues. As you can see, there's going to be three access points onto Lebanon Pike. Of course, one's going to be primarily for just, you know, employee random traffic coming and going. The other two are going to be reserved for both the fire trucks and the ambulances. They'll be out only. We won't want anybody to see, we wouldn't want to see anybody coming in on those. So, you can see it's built a little further off the road as well, so it gives them a little bit of space there between where the road is and where the building is going to be. But with that, this plan does appear to be in good order. There's some tweaks that we do have to work through, but we're comfortable moving this forward with that, but I'll let Mike chime in on any other comments he may have.
Thank you, Doug. So, Doug is correct. This far north is to the right on the page, so there will be, this will be the entrance into the station for staff and, and the fire trucks and ambulances returning. This side will be for ambulances only. This is the fire truck side. On these two new sites, they've added a little turnaround right here. There's enough room to store two ambulances in this side right here, and the thought is if this first ambulance is out on a call and the other one is in the back, instead of driving around to the back and making this one move up, they, they made a little turnaround so they can pull forward and then back into the spot if the, the other ambulance is still in this location. So, it's just a slight little tweak, but we thinks it'll, it'll help the functionality of the site. There is a stormwater, I passed it already, a stormwater detention pond planned behind the ball field here, and I'll show you. So, that station will be going right here next to the school. Three entrances will be off Lebanon Pike here, and then it will have drainage going back to the stormwater management area here. We were told that the community is involved with the ball field, and the ball field needs to stay. They've taken ownership of that, so we don't want that to go away, so we're going to work around that and, and put the stormwater management area back here.
Motion to approve, do we have a second? Have a second. Further discussion? Let's make history. All those in favor of approval, Rutherford County Public Health and Safety Building, Walter Hill, 223014, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries with comments. Item three, Rutherford County Public Health and Safety Building, Last Cassis, 223015. Construction of a 10,731-square-foot public safety facility fire station on 4.49 acres, zoned in, located along Last Cassis Pike. SR 96, Rutherford County Government, an applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. As stated during the last application, this is another location for a health and safety center. I won't go into all the comments I made just a moment ago, as it's the same for this. This does not have access to city sewer, so this one will not have to go through the Murphy'sville Planning Commission. You'll recall the estates at Last Cassis, I think was the one we considered a little earlier on, yes, the estates at Last Cassis Pike. This is the one where we're going to be adding about three acres of property to the county-owned property, which will allow, as Mike was talking about, another access point to the recreation area ball fields in the back, so that it won't interfere with the traffic coming out of the health and safety centers. So, again, most of our comments have been addressed on this. I'll let Mike handle any of the stormwater issues. There was one thing that we are going to work around with the app, with the design engineer, that had to do with the location of an existing gas line located on the eastern property line. They originally were showing some grading and landscaping in that area. However, after looking at that, it, it's probably going to be a better idea to kind of relocate the location of the gas line and then just kind of keep the drainage and the landscaping in its location there at that eastern property line. That way, we're not going to be impacting that line for, for anything. So, I just wanted to make that, make everybody aware of that. Again, Mike is available for any questions about stormwater drainage or anything. Also, and I failed to note to mention this during our, our last discussion on the one at Walter Hill, Josh Sanders with the, our fire marshal is here if you have specific questions about the building itself and the functionality of the building. We always appreciate his input into this process. So, with that, again, we'd recommend approval and be happy to answer any questions.
So, there's, there's a gas service line that Doug's talking about in this area right here. We thought it best, it's not a large line serving the existing volunteer fire hall right here. We're just going to relocate it out of the way for landscaping and, and stormwater. Get it? So, and this will be the new driveway location back to the ball fields, which are pretty active, I've been told. Got a great program out there. We will need T-dot entrance permits on this site as well as the Walter Hill as we're tying into both T-dot roads. That's nothing unusual.
I have a question. All these buildings will be the same and have the same services? How many people will be staffing these on a regular basis?
I'll let Josh take that one.
I'll let Josh answer that.
Typically, they'll be staffed with five fire personnel per shift and two EMS personnel per shift.
So, we've, we've got enough parking for double shifts, so at the change of shifts, one shift leaving, one entering, there's enough parking for that.
To answer some of that for you, these are not being built, being built for today. They're being built also for the future. So, that gives you some idea. This is just not one of those buildings that you build for now. We also are building them where they also look for out there in the future what we've got to do as far as protecting citizens of Rutherford County. I think that's pretty much the decision of what we've got there. This one at Last Cassis is also, we're protecting a little bit of tradition. There's a stone wall that we've had to deal with out there. It's, it's bigger than some Civil War monuments and things that we've had to deal with and moving. But, but this is the wall that was there for the old Last Cassis School that everybody went to sit on to get their first kiss. And we have been told that if you move that, you, you can't have the fire station. So, we have worked with trying to keep that, that part of the community. So, there's more to these buildings than just mortar and bricks and a way to put in the equipment to protect the citizens. It's also to protect the community as well. So, all this is being done in all of these. And if you'll notice where they're all being built, they're being built back into the old communities of Rutherford County. That's, that's a part of it, too.
Mr. Chair, recognizing the tremendous amount of work that you and your committee have, have put into this, this project to get these all over the county, I want to, I'm very pleased to make a motion to approve this, subject to staff comments.
I have a motion to approve. Have the second. All those in favor of approving the Rutherford County Public Health and Safety Building, Last Cassis, 223015, with comments, say aye. All opposed? It is approved. You have staff reports and other business?
Yes, sir, thank you. I have nothing to add. We have three rezonings coming up at our August the 8th meeting, which will be our next meeting. One of them promises to have some, some discussion behind it, for lack of a better way to say it. We'll just, I don't think it'll be quite to the extent of the meeting we, we had last month, or actually earlier this month, excuse me. But, but yeah, just to alert you about that, there'll be three applications on that next meeting.
Anything else should be brought forward at this time? If not, keep our chairman in your, in your prayers, he and his wife, and we look forward to seeing him back at our next meeting, and not any more than I do, to see him back. With that, we are adjourned.